Hi, everybody. Welcome to today's CATHEDRA webinar. We are coming to you live on July 10th, 2025, and you're tuning in for day four of the five-day series on the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners, presented by your instructor Cheryl A. Cosley, who is Principal of Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates, Housing Consulting and Management Services. We're almost to the finish line, y'all, day four or five. My name is Brooke Orington. I'm the Training and Development Specialist here at the Native Learning Center. We're also happy you could tune in for today's webinar. If you could follow along while I read the disclaimer aloud, this webinar provides a summary of fundamental concepts, requirements, and/or procedures within the allotted 90 minutes. The material discussed does not illustrate all possible scenarios that could be applicable. We also have our copyright infringement law printed here. This is just a friendly reminder that the webinar materials are protected by copyright, trademark, trade secret, and other intellectual property laws. If you need to refer back to any of the previous days of the training, the recordings are posted for you in the Courses section under Board of Directors training. You can also access a PDF of all the different day's slides. Brianna has already put a copy of today's presentation slides in the chat for you. That link is there at the top. And Cheryl put together a really extensive list of resource materials for you, and those can also be found through the course pages. There's about 28 resource items, and then the 29th item is like a table of contents list. So we encourage you to go in and download all of those. Cheryl refers to them throughout her presentations. When you tune in tomorrow for day five, you'll just log in like you did today and click on that green banner at the top of the screen. If you join and you find that my voice is coming out of the wrong speaker, maybe you're trying to listen on your headphones. Maybe you have like a Bluetooth speaker you're trying to use. You can come down to the bottom of your screen at that telephone icon, and that'll bring up a list of your mic and speaker devices, and you can choose the right one. We do, of course, encourage class participation throughout the webinar. You know, we want to hear your questions, your comments, especially tech support issues. You can let me know, and I'll help you navigate through. But we'll primarily rely, excuse me, on the public chat. So if you don't yet have that open, you can go to the Messages panel and click on Public Chat. That'll open it. Anything you want to say or ask, just come click in this box here that says Send Message to Public Chat. Type what you want to say, hit Enter, or click on the cute little paper airplane, and that'll send it in. Most questions that you have will probably be answered throughout Cheryl's presentation as she goes, and she'll do questions at the end. But if you want to kind of send your question in there just to make sure you remember it, feel free to send it into the chat. And there's also a list of helpful links in the shared notes. There's links for us at the Native Learning Center, like our webinar feedback survey, our YouTube archive, things like that. But I've also included all the links to what's found throughout the presentation, and I'll try to put those into the chat as they come up on the slides. We'd love if you test out the public chat for us now before we get going. If you could take a moment, let us know your name, where you're tuning in from. It's always fun to see which different tribal nations are represented on the webinar, your work or your role in Indian country, and your tribal affiliation. If you have one, you might be a tribal government employee and not have your own tribal affiliation. That's okay, too. A quick final note while y'all are introducing yourselves in the chat. Do your best not to click on that little red menu panel to the very far left of your screen. Yours might not look like this. Yours might just be the little icons. But just know if you click on something on there, it's going to immediately pull you from the webinar, and it's going to take you to whatever you clicked on. But you can always rejoin by just clicking on that green banner at the top of the screen once again. All right, y'all. While you're introducing yourselves in the chat, it's with great pleasure I introduce your webinar instructor, Cheryl A. Cosley. And Cheryl, I have made you presenter now.
Thank you so very much. So as Brooke said, welcome to day four. Please come back for day five. Hope you continue to learn something every single day. And this presentation is brought to you through the Native Learning Center and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. In our case, we fall under Native American program. So welcome and good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Cosley. My initial name is Redbird Woman. I am Moon Clan, and I come from Place of the Pike. In my language, it's Kino Shinkoning, which means the Bay Mills Indian Community. Our reservation is located at the top of Michigan, and our waters actually border Canada. We are a Jibway and Chipwah people. And I served as Director of Housing for my tribe for over 28 years. During that timeframe, I served as Chairperson to the Great Lakes Association, Indian Housing Association. That's the 31 tribes surrounding the Great Lakes. And I was the Chair of that organization for seven years. And I also served on the Board of Directors for the National American Indian Housing Council. For 16 years, I started as Secretary, then I became the Vice Chair, and then I served a two-term, two-year stint for each for Chairwoman. I started Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates in March of 2019, providing training and technical assistance throughout the Lower 48 and Alaska. I do that virtually, just like this, and I do it in person. So I'm very, very blessed to be able to continue to service our people. I've been in this line since 1990, February in 1990. So my heart is truly with housing and helping our people. So I hope you learned something today. My information is at the beginning and the end of every presentation. Should you ever come across, you know, something you need a quick answer with, please feel free to reach out to me, and I will try to assist you. That's what I like to do, is just help. So our course objectives is to hopefully help you as a Board of Commissioner or even a staff member, you know, whatever position you have within the housing entity. Make sure that you are aware of the rules and the regulations that we're supposed to follow when we accept that money from HUD. So hopefully, you know, you're learning that over the course of the last couple of days, and some of those requirements the housing programs need to have in place to have a successful housing program. So that's what we're after. And please grab those reference materials. They're up to date as of today. And there are quite a few of them. As Brooke said, we have 28 of them for this particular course. You know, some of them came out this year. It's updated federal supply source, you know, different things like that. The income, make sure that your staff or, you know, the staff of your housing entity are using the current figures. They're not using 2024s because these are higher, and you can actually, you know, help more of your people. So today, we're going to get in with the conflict of interest requirements, not only in the administration of contracts, but in the admissions to your programs and written codes of standards of conduct and code of ethics and one-year prohibition. We do that to make sure that your board and your staff even are aware when they have to actually recuse themselves to stay out of trouble. You know, oftentimes, it's not an actual conflict of interest. All it has to be is a perceived conflict of interest. So hopefully, you'll learn those protection mechanisms to help you. Federal labor standards? There's a little slippage. We have a little slippage in Indian country with Davis Bacon and things like that. When we expend over $2,000 in funds, and it's not your tribe or your tribal staff doing the work, we're supposed to pay Davis Bacon wages or a tribal prevailing wage rate. And I don't mean a wage grid. I mean one that's specific to housing construction. And then we're going to talk about some of those other federal requirements, and that's another area that we need to strengthen our programs. We're supposed to have useful life and binding commitments in place for our organizations. And, you know, a lot of us still don't. So I'm trying to make sure that you don't get any type of trouble and help you learn some of the things that we have to make sure that we have in place. So you can go through with, you know, no audit findings. And if you have a HUD visiting, you know, monitoring visit, everything goes well. So I hope you enjoyed today's class. We'll start with the conflict of interest requirements in the administration of our contracts. So what is a conflict of interest? It applies, it's the same across the board, whether it is in admissions or it's in the administration of contracts. It's when somebody in a position of trust has a competing professional and personal interest. When somebody makes a decision in an official capacity, and they could stand a profit personally. You know, sometimes, like I said, it could be a perceived conflict of interest. You just have to make sure that that does not occur. When your interests have the potential to conflict with the best interests of the organization and which you're going to represent. So recusal is a huge thing. And like I said yesterday, I always reach out to the tribal council when I teach that class and ask them to share some of their teachings with the Board of Commissioners because it puts your staff in an awkward position. Because, you know, in one way, the Board of Commissioners are their supervisors, and you're saying, "No, no, no, you know, you can't do this, and you're supposed to do this," or "you need to step back." And it puts them in an awkward position. So some of the guidelines are found under 2 CFR 21318. A non-federal entity, and that's what they consider your housing program, has to maintain written standards of conduct covering conflicts of interest, governing the performance of their employees engaged in the selection, the award, and the administration of contracts. No employee, no officer, no agent can participate in the selection, the award, the administration of a contract supported by a federal award if they have a real or apparent conflict of interest. So that's, you know, kind of where the perceived part comes in. So such a conflict of interest would arise when that employee, officer, or agent... So they're talking about, you know, you as a Board of Commissioner and the tribal council, any member of his or her immediate family. And this is when the definition of immediate family needs to be looked at by the Board, by the tribal council, because this is when it's going to come into play. A lot of times, it's suggested that perhaps you define immediate family as somebody that you would pay a four-day funeral leave for. But when they were writing these laws, they had even suggested cousin. And I just, I couldn't agree with that. And I argued that point. I said, "Did you know how many cousins I had by the time I was 12 years old?" You know, and I've seen places where there's three times as many as I have. On a reservation, we're related to almost everybody. One way, you know, it might be a second cousin or a third cousin, but there's a relationship there. So make sure you have a good, good definition of immediate family also. So that conflict of interest would arise when the employee, officer, agent, any member of his or her immediate family, his or her partner, okay? You don't have to even be married. An organization which employs or is about to employ. So that's a really wide net, okay? Is about to employ any of the parties indicated herein. They have a financial or other interest or another tangible personal benefit from a firm considered for a contract. Officers, employees, agents of your non-federal entity must neither solicit nor accept gratuities, favors, anything of monetary value from contractors or parties to your subcontracts. However, your non-federal entity may set standards for situations when that financial interest is not substantial or the gift is an unsolicited item of nominal value. The standards of conduct must provide for disciplinary actions to be applied for violations of such standards by officers, employees, and agents of your non-federal entity. Okay, so your standards of conduct must provide for disciplinary actions. You could probably use one of these upcoming slides that talks about that. But you have to make sure that you have something in place that addresses that, okay? Because they'll look for it. So gifts, entertainment, gratuities. You know, I've seen this run from $25 to $100. Usually not more than that, but our housing entities, you know, you go by that policy. You know, an employee shall not solicit or accept directly or indirectly any favor, any gift exceeding $50 in value, gratuity, favor, loan, anything of monetary value from a person or organization who has in the past. So this is a past contractor or tends to seek to obtain. So this could be a future contractor, a contractual business, financial relation with the housing entity or who has interest which may be affected by the performance or non-performance of an employee's official duty. So I had a staff member that went through, you know, our college and went through the building trades classes and actually became an inspector. Non-performance of duty would be him turning his head when something was, you know, not being done that will be hidden by, you know, closing in the wall or whatever. That would be a non-performance of that official duty. So an employee can't accept food refreshments of a nominal value on an infrequent occasion, you know, in the ordinary course of a breakfast, lunch, and dinner meeting or other meeting where an employee may be properly in attendance, or they can accept unsolicited advertising materials such as pens, calendars, other items of nominal value. So this came from my policy that we wrote. That, you know, allowed us to pick up the letter opener, to pick up, you know, the tablet from the Native Learning Center, you know, things like that, and not get in trouble. Now, the food and refreshments, well, often when we were at a convention or things like that, Amerind or somebody like that would be there, and there would be a group of people, and they would pick up the lunch tab or whatever for the people at that table. That allowed us to accept that. That's why that was written that particular way. So 21318, general standards, written standards of conduct required. No employee, officer, or agent may participate in the selection, award, administration of a contract if there is a real or apparent conflict of interest when the employee, officer, agent member of his or her immediate family has a financial or other interest in or a tangible personal benefit for a firm considered for a contract. And you have to maintain written standards of conduct with respect to organizational conflicts of interest. So that might pertain to the tribe as a whole. I had a situation where we get a lot of snowfall in the wintertime, and our tribal council was my governing body. And one of the people that were recently elected was the owner of the company that you used to, you know, he used to put in a bid, and he'd get it quite often for shoveling, shoveling our apartment buildings and things like that when we would get so much snow, like last year. I think we got 180 inches, something like that. The boys, I imagine, really needed help keeping all of their properties shoveled. You know, it gets to a point where there's so much that you don't have enough manpower. You have to. So when he got hired or he got elected, it's in November, and he's getting ready to put his thing together. And I'm like, you know, I don't think you should put in for that. Well, why? I said, "Because it's going to be a perceived conflict of interest." You've done it for years, but I think for this two-year period, you need to step back and not put in. Just because of the fact that she gave that contract to a tribal councilman. How much is he getting paid? You know, I didn't want to go through that. And he didn't like it, but he understood it, you know? So you have to sometimes have those difficult conversations with your sometimes boss, you know, just to stick out of trouble. So conflict of interest, you know, the housing authority prohibits its officers, employees, agents from participating directly or indirectly in the selection or in the award or the administration of any contract if a conflict, real or apparent, would be involved. Such conflict would arise when a financial or other interest in a firm is held by an officer of the housing, you know, an employee, an agent involved in making the award. Now, this is when your immediate family definition comes in, his or her relative, including, and this is a lot. I've seen it slimmed down a little bit, but father, mother, son, daughter, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, husband, wife, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, stepfather, stepmother, stepson, stepdaughter, stepbrother, stepsister, half-brother, and half-sister. That's a lot of people, just for immediate family. His or her partner or an organization which employs, is negotiating to employ, or has an arrangement concerning prospective employment of any of the above. So the Any Tribal, and when I write, that's who I write for. We're now the Any Tribal Indian Housing Authority, prohibits its officers, employees, and agents from soliciting or accepting gratuities, favors, anything of monetary value other than unsolicited items of nominal intrinsic value from contractors, potential contractors, parties to subcontracts, and the knowing use of confidential information for actual or anticipated personal gain. So this is an area where you also have to make sure that you train all of your staff. Don't assume that they know that they can't share who put in a bid for things because they will have, you know, one of the cutest guys on the crew come in and flirt with the women sitting at the front desk and say, "Hey, who else has bidden on this thing? You know, are we the only ones?" You know, I've seen it. I've seen it in different places, you know, different tactics taken, you know? But they want to know how many people are bidding, you know? And you have to make sure everybody is aware of how you react and work with bids. So, you know, procurement, contract administration, that becomes really important also. So this is the portion about the violations. You have to have it in writing. This is a very good example, I guess you would say. Disciplinary action will be taken to remedy violations of this code. May include a verbal or written warning, formal reprimand, suspension, or dismissal. The level of the disciplinary action will depend on the severity of the violation, the individual's prior behavior, and the nature of the individual's position. There's some people that just not, they're not allowed to make a mistake. They're supposed to know better. Notice that the Any Tribal Indian Housing Authority communicates requirements of this code during orientations, at trainings, and the bylaws of the Board of Commissioners and within its personnel and procurement policies. Okay, so you got to have something like that. Now, you can't go just by value either. I made a huge mistake. I've got a person in the class right now that was a prior student at one time, and I probably shared the story. But I actually went in and I had a building trades person who owned a lumber company, and he would come over. You know, we don't have big box stores here. We have to go two to three hours for that, over three hours, actually. And so we tried it. You're supposed to spread your money around when it's federal funds. So we tried to shop with all of them, and this one would come in. "Hey, you got anything coming up? Anything that, you know, I could possibly bid on? Do you need any, you know, product that I could help you with?" And then he said, "Oh, by the way, I got some shirts." He said, "Can I share them with your crew?" And I said, "Can I see it?" And he threw me a shirt, and I picked it up, but I thought, oh, maybe five bucks, you know, bought in bulk. I didn't, I looked at the monetary value of it rather than what was written on it, which was advertising his place of business. And the crew loved him, protecting their clothes. You know, they were lightweight. So if it was really, really hot, they, you know, change their shirts out and put those on or... Then one of my guys is moving a sprinkler after he molded the wand, and I'm writing an RFP. And I look down at the RFP, and I look up, and I read a shirt, and I look down at it again, and I realize that guy's going to probably put in to bid on this particular project, the request for proposal. And then I realized, you know, how would I feel if I was submitting a bid and I watched one of the staff of the housing authority stroll by promoting my competition or the guy that I'm bidding against? So, you know, you can't always base it on the price. So conflict of interest in admissions, just, you know, you got to be careful. The requirements, so 200 through 318 really deal with procurement and that type of contracting, the awarding of contracts. 24 CFR 1000 deals with admissions mostly. 30 through 36 govern all those other cases, and there's actually a program guidance in these materials here that talk about conflict of interest. And it goes all the way back to 2002. So it's a 23-year-old document, but it is the one that we have to use because it has not been replaced yet. So again, same conflict of interest definition. We are supposed to report a potential conflict of interest to our own app office, where it is supposed to also disclose to the public a conflict of interest, the nature of assistance to be provided to the individual, the specific basis for which there is no conflict of interest. Okay? It's to ensure fair and equitable treatment for all. You have to determine if conflict exists. You disclose it to the public. You make up, you put up a notice, and you send that notice to HUD prior to providing assistance. HUD can make an exception, depending on what it is. You know, sometimes they don't need to make an exception, but you need to notify them. If the family has low income and they qualify, it's not a conflict, but you still need to make that disclosure. If the conflict is only apparent or perceived, you make the disclosure and you inform HUD. So there's several ways to make a public disclosure. One way is to make that information available in the same way that you post your APR. Put it up in your housing office. Put it up in the tribal office, wherever you make that. Some programs actually include a public disclosure section in their monthly meeting minute agendas. HUD must be provided with a copy of the disclosure. And if you're a TDHE, you might want to provide that to your tribe as well. So it goes back to this program guidance from 2002-13. And I was around, sitting at the table when this occurred. And basically, the Office of Inspector General and Congress and everybody else involved wanted to know how we were going and how we were doing with Nahazda as opposed to the 1937 Act. So the Inspector General went, and he did an audit. He went across and he picked several random housing entities across the United States. Big ones, little ones, rancherias, pueblos, Alaskan villages, large land-based tribes, little, you know, little tribes. So he had a really big, you know, different methods, you know, to see how we were doing. At the time, the sixth finding of that audit was that along all of those housing entities they reviewed, there was undisclosed conflicts of interest and preferential treatment in the admission to our housing programs. Over half of the entities that they audited had no process to ensure adherence to the conflict of interest requirements or that our admissions were being made to eligible families and that all the members of the tribe were treated fairly. Okay, so that's what HUD looks for, more so than your auditor, but your auditor's going to look for it, too. That's what HUD looks for, more so than your auditor, but your auditor's gonna look for it too, you have to treat all your tribal members the same. I had a lawyer, one of my first councilmen, um, that said Cheryl, always ask yourself. If somebody's asking me to do something, can I do it for every tribal person that comes in the door? Or every tribal member, and if your answer is no, you shouldn't be doing it. And you know, I apply that to this day, um, working, so you have to do that, um. They also did this as a protection mechanism, so if you had a. You know, tribal chairman or anybody actually of power. That wanted your executive director to bypass the waiting list. They could say, sure, we can do that, but we're gonna have to notify HUD in writing. Tell them how they got on this list, we're gonna have to post it for seven days, you know, um. And usually they'll back down at that point, okay, um, that's, you know, a protection mechanism also. So your conflict of interest provisions apply to anybody who participates in the decision-making process, who gains inside information with regard to any of our activities. Individuals are not limited to your housing staff, your housing board and tribal council. And then again, it extends to their immediate families and their business associates. The requirements prohibit any individuals from benefiting from their positions personally. Through or other than the payment of salary or the appropriate administrative expenses. It doesn't prevent your housing staff, your board members, your tribal council, their family, their business associates from. Receiving housing benefits for which they qualify if they're low income and they're on the list next, you know. Um, there's some exceptions, you know, um. When they fall between eighty and a hundred percent and their tribal council or their board of commissioners, they're gonna look at it harder, that's just the way it is, okay? Um, or if they're your staff, actually, so anybody between eighty and a hundred percent that have that immediate relationship. They're gonna look at it harder, just to make sure that everything is on the up and up, because it's a perceived conflict of interest. In order to effectively comply with conflict of interest requirements, recipients should have in place a set of procedures for determining when a conflict of interest exists. For reporting that conflict to HUD, disclosing it to the public as required by the regulations. And they should include a method of determining whether or not there is a potential conflict of interest. Does your housing application ask your applicants to disclose any personal, family or business relationships? With your housing entities' decision makers? Does your housing entity maintain a list of persons having immediate family or business ties to your decision makers? Okay, that was the second point where I argued till I was red in the face in Washington DC. I said, that would be a full-time job, you know, especially when you have. Housing Authority staff turning over your, you know, um, housing tribal council members. Them turning over and who they're related to and what business interests they have, you know, um, I believed. And I told them that a good conflict of interest policy and procedures would do just fine, you know, so, um. There was several of us that argued that point as well as the cousin point, so, um. Any administrative steps for reporting a potential conflict of interest to your area own app office? Disclosing to the public the conflict of interest, the nature of the assistance to be provided. The individual, the specific basis for which the selection of that individual was made. So exceptions to the requirements, exceptions can be made to conflict of interest provisions, HUD approval. Must be uh obtained through your local area own app office before. You provide benefits to any individual as an exception to one thousand thirty. Exceptions are considered on a case-by-case basis, when making the exception can be shown to further the primary objective of Nahazda, okay? The way the rules are written, it it kind of goes back and forth on the subject, so one minute you're talking about admissions and then the next minute. They're talking about, um, contracting. So I asked around to a lot of people that have been around many, many years, even longer than me and I've got a long track record, um. And they collectively remember one exception that was allowed. And it wasn't allowed for the placement of somebody, it was allowed for contracting and it was a tribal chairman who was termed out. And he wanted to bid on a job that was coming up a couple of months down the road. He knew what it was, he did all the proper recusal, he didn't see any figures, he didn't see any meeting minutes, he didn't see anything that came to the budgeting. And HUD allowed him to bid on that project because of the steps that he took, that he asked the permission and that it would promote Indian preference. That is the only exception that I've really ever heard of, so. I don't know if there's a lot of exceptions. Low-income individuals to who your conflict of interest provisions would normally apply, housing staff, board members. Who qualify for assistance under your written policies for eligibility, admission and occupancy, don't fall under the category of an exception. Own app approval is not required to provide them with the assistance for which they qualify. However, you still need to make that public disclosure and notify HUD. Um, before the assistance is provided, okay, that that's so, you know, you can make sure that everything. Is perceived as on the up and up, um. Actions to be taken, your recipient should be, make sure that they have all the written and adopted policies required under Nahazda. Your eligibility, your admission, your occupancy, your rents charged, your management, your maintenance. All your policies have to be in accordance with Nahazda program regulations enforced by a set of procedures. That ensure that those policies are being adhered to in the actions of the staff and the decisions of your board. They should be refu- reviewed to ensure that they don't contain any provisions that inherently allow any type of conflict of interest. Um, if your housing entity doesn't have the necessary policies and systems and control procedures to comply with Nahazda requirements. They should be written and adopted immediately, all policies should be made public and copies should be. Available to the public upon request, okay? So you need a conflict of interest policy. And it should outline how you're gonna go about making sure, you know, that there are no conflicts of interest. Um, your exclusions, how you're going to make your public disclosure, how long it's gonna be, what you're gonna put. In your, um, application packages, you know, asking about that. Relationship with the decision makers, um, identifying what immediate family is. So you you make sure that that you do that and you talk about, you know, your public comment. Please be advised, all public comics have to be, you know, postmarked within seven calendar days of the initial date of the posting. Your posting has to be up for seven days, they sign where it's at, who put it up, what time they put it up. And the same thing coming down and don't let them take it down early, if it went up at. Seven o'clock in the morning, don't take it down till seven oh one, you know, seven days from then. Um, just make sure they adhere to that and then, you know, all of your definitions and things like that and then you're gonna send that, so. You're going to have to play with this document, i- it's in your reference materials if you don't have one. Because it has not been updated by HUD, if you're going to reuse theirs. You're going to have to, it's from, you know, two thousand and something, you're gonna have to redo the date portion and it's gonna have to have your date in it. This last line, the specific basis for the selection, they're American Indian, they're Alaskan or Alaska native. They are low income as determined by HUD. It's going to be their primary residence and I would always put on that last line and they are next on the waiting list, um. And then, you know, on this day it went up, it was posted by at this location. Uh, on this day, it came down and it was taken down by, now. You're supposed to only have to keep certain files for three years. If it comes to someone that you need to post like this, okay? Put that with the proof that they're income eligible at the time of admission and you keep that forever. Keep it in the same group, it goes from file to file to file if they've been there twenty-five years and it gets this thick. You need to always prove that they were income eligible at admission and if you have to go through the procedure to post it, put that in there too. You don't ever wanna be in the position that, hi, did you do this? Well, yeah, we did, but I threw that away cuz that was five years ago. Cuz your HUD monitoring took seven years to happen, you know, um, you wanna say, yes, I did and here it is, um, it's just easier. So all of your applications should be asking about the relationship with your decision makers. So this is what, um, I would suggest that you put in your packets, it's always a really good idea. That you have a set of policies and you have application packets separate for every program that you offer. Because there's little differences in every program, you know, sometimes in the rents you charge, um. Definitely a difference between putting in for an apartment and putting in for a rehab, um. But this conflict of interest statement should go into every type of application, so. The applicants, it's a conflict of interest statement, it's an applicant's name, the name of the program that they're applying for, their application date. I'm applying for the ATIH program, uh. Noted above and I am disclosing that I am an employee of the Housing Authority, I'm a board of commissioner or I am a tribal council member. Or I am an immediate family member of an employee, VOC or tribal council. I'm a business associate of a, you know, um, housing employee. A board of commissioner or a tribal council member, or I am neither to all of the above. If you are a family member or a business member of an employee, board of commissioner or tribal council. Please state their name and your relationships, so it's got a name and a relationship point and then your acknowledgement. I understand that a public disclosure of my selection will be made, that a copy of this disclosure will be submitted to HUD. I uh been notified of my opportunity to receive a copy of the conflict of interest policy. Or to receive additional information from the housing entity. And I understand that this disclosure does not disqualify and or determine my application ineligible. Then it's got, you know, the signatures of all of them, all the adults, so. You need to have a procedure like that, if you don't, make sure you, you know, you develop one. So written code of standards of conduct, these are good for your board members. And your staff, okay, because the awarding of contracts by housing recipients involves, like we talked about earlier in the week, the expenditure of federal funds. Federal funds are a different. Well, I don't wanna say this, but you can have two stacks of money, one stack is non-federal funds and one stack is federal funds and if you do something wrong with both stacks. The stack that is the federal funds are gonna be the ones that get you in the big, big trouble, um, you know. You have to be really careful about how you expend, you know, your expenditures, that you spend that money correctly, um. Because the awarding of those contracts by housing recipients involves the expenditure of federal funds. Employees and contractors are held to a higher standard of conduct than those that work with private contracts. To maintain confidence that your housing recipient's procurement process is fair, it is essential that standards of conduct are maintained at all times. Employees, board members, you have to carry out your duties impartially to assure that fairness. They should conduct themselves in a manner to promote confidence in the integrity of your organization. Any attempt by an employee or a board member to realize personal gain by conduct inconsistent with proper procurement procedures. Should be a breach of the housing standards of conduct, okay? We're gonna go into that area, but before I forget, you should also have something in your policies that prohibit people from campaigning. In your housing office, that means tribal members, that means board of commissioners, anybody running for any office. And taking supplies for the use of those campaigns, okay? Um, I've seen it happen in two different places and it put the ED in a really difficult position. Because they were current sitting tribal councilmen raiding, you know, basically the supply closet, um. So put something that in, like that into your policies also to protect them. I put it up on the door, you know, I realize that it is election time, but please visit my staff at their home. Not during working hours and I would put them up on all three entrances to our housing entity during that time. Because I had people that weren't sitting council come in and they plop down and they'd be there for two, three hours and and that was very disruptive to workflow. So, um, standards of conduct go into other areas too. So use the confidential information, that's really, really important, your your staff should be trained in this as well as your board members. Disclosure confidential information to any person not authorized by your contracting officer, okay, now your contracting officer. Unless you're big, you know, is usually your ED, um. To receive such information shall be a breach of ethical standards. Confidential information includes but is not necessarily limited to the contents of a bid prior to a bid opening. Or proposal prior to a contract award using competitive proposals. Names of individuals, firms that submitted bids prior to a bid opening or proposals prior to a contract award. Use of confidential information, your generated information related to procurement, including your cost estimates, your contractor selection. Your evaluation plans, your specifications, before your solicitation is issued. Any other information, the disclosure of which would have a direct bearing upon that contract award or your competitive process. It's a breach of ethical conduct for any current or former employee. Officer or agent to knowingly use confidential information for actual or anticipated. Personal gain or for actual or anticipated personal gain of any other person. So you need to actually make sure within your other board members or board of commissioners. That when it gets time to start awarding contracts, that they don't have anybody that they are related to that could be bidding on that particular project. And you find that out before you share anything, okay, um, if they've got a son. That works for a paint company and you're gonna be painting all your units, you might ask them to recuse themselves. And you have to actually redact the meeting, meeting minutes or, you know, they can't receive all of that information. And you have to teach them about that disclosure, it doesn't mean just pushing yourself back. It means leaving the room and not hearing any of the conversations that have to do with that, um. Cuz you can get in big trouble from the other people that are, you know, competing for those funds. So confidentiality policy, you should have one, um, you should have it signed yearly by your staff. By your board of commissioners, you know, where the Housing Authority seeks to protect the interest of your residents and applicants by. Prohibiting the exploitive use of personal information to the extent permitted by tribal and state law. Housing entity is also mandated by HUD, uh confidentiality requirements to protect tenant information, all the housing authority records. In all cases, the release of housing authority records require the prior written approval of the executive director. Now I have seen some housing entities that have extended that and said, and the. Um, client involved. So you would need also permission from them to be in their file, um. Now therefore be resolved that the policy of this housing authority is to protect the interest of the people we serve to the maximum extent permitted by law. All employees, members of the authority, including the housing commissioners, the tribal council are required to abide by this standard. Only inspectors, auditors and investigators. Others who are engaged in their normal functions as approved by HUD may have access to confidential information concerning. Residents and applicants. Now, w- when I go in and I'm helping somebody, you know, um, prepare for monitoring or answer monitoring findings. HUD is the one that brings down that contract, so I'm covered by that, um. An auditor is covered by that, the people that need to see that information are covered, you know, um. Does your board members really need to be in a tenant file? Not really, you know, you can give them information, you can redact it somewhat like you would do with a criminal, um, if you're running a criminal lien. So your actions upon discovery of a conflict, upon discovery of any actual or potential conflict of interest. Employees, officers, commissioners, uh agents must promptly file a written statement of disqualification. Must withdraw from further participation in that transaction involved. Grantees, subgrantees, you're gonna maintain a written code of standards of conduct governing the performance of your employees engaged in the award. And administration of contracts, no employee, officer, agent shall participate in the selection of an award. Or administration of a contract supported by federal funds if a conflict of interest, real or apparent. Would be involved, so. You'll see sometimes, um, when I teach procurement and things like that, we will give them scenarios, you know, um. You can't be like the contracting officer sup- supervising a contract with your nephew. As the crew leader, you know, or or as one of the major subs, um, there's a conflict of interest there, so you have to be real careful. How far that net extends, so no person who exercises or has exercised any functions or responsibility. With respect to activities funded by your housing entity, who is in a position to participate in your decision-making process. Gain any type of insight information with regard to these activities. Can obtain a financial interest or benefit from an, you know, housing entity assisted activity. Have any interest in a contract subcontract agreement with respect thereto or proceeds thereunder. There's your legal terminology, uh, either for themselves or for those who they have a a a family or business tie. During their tenure or for one year thereafter. Such conflict would arise when a financial or other interest in a firm selected. For an award is held by and then you go into your definition of immediate family. So his or her partner, organizations who is going to employ is negotiating to employ, so it's also a really good idea, um. That you have a code of ethics and that your board of commissioners sign these also, okay? I've seen some places where they have the tribal councils. I've seen some places where they have the tribal councils also do this. Let me see if I, no, I didn't. Okay. So members of the board will listen carefully to your teammates, those served by their housing entity, respect the opinions of your other board members. Respect and support the majority decisions of the board. Recognize that the authority is vested in the board when it meets in legal section, session, not with. Individual board members. Keep well informed of developments that are relevant to issues that come before the board. Particip- participate actively. Um, in your board meetings and actions, call to the attention of the board, any issues that could have an adverse effect on your housing entity or those that you serve. Attempt to interpret the needs of the constituents to your housing entity. And interpret the actions of your housing entity to your constituents. Refer constituent or staff complaints to the proper level of the chain of command. Recognize that the board member's job is to ensure that your housing entity is well managed, not to manage your housing entity. Um, vote to hire the best possible person to manage your housing entity. Represent all your constituents and not solely a particular geographic area or special interest group. Consider yourself a trustee of your housing entity, do your best to ensure that it's well maintained, financially secure. Growing and always operating in the best interest of your constituents. Always work to learn about the board member's job, how to do it better. Declare any conflict of interest between your personal life and your position on your board. And avoid voting, voting on issues that appear to be a conflict of interest. Members of the, a board will not be critical in or outside of the board meeting of other board members or their opinions. They should not use the housing entity or any part. Of the housing entity for personal advantage or the personal advantage of friends or relatives. They should never discuss the confidential proceedings of your board outside of your board meeting. They should never promise prior to a meeting how each will vote on any issue within the meeting. They should never interfere with the duties of the executive director or undermine the executive director's authority. And they should never be involved in self-dealing that provides personal gain. So if you don't have. A code of ethics, it's a good idea that you get them. Um, and normally. If you onboard the board of commissioners like you should, um. They should have a process, you know, I've seen places where they actually swear them in. And, and go through, you know, a couple hour, this is your duties. So that one year prohibition was alluded to in some of those other documents. It was a requirement for many years that that was in place. It is no longer, when it came over to Nahazda, a requirement there. But a lot of the housing entities and tribes have put it back. Um, a prohibition against selling to the recipient. Even though it is no longer prohibited, it's good practice not to allow a present or a former employee or a board member. Of the recipient to engage in selling or attempting to sell supplies, construction. Other services to the recipient, which includes land. Um, for one year following the date that that employment has ended or their time on, you know, the board. During their tenure and for one year thereafter, no commissioner, officer, employee of the authority, any member of the governing body of the tribe. Any other public official who exercises any responsibility or functions with regard to the project. Shall voluntarily acquire any interest, direct or indirect, in any project or property included. Or plan to be included in any project. Uh, any contract, any contract or proposed contract relating to any project unless prior to such acquisition. They disclose their interest in writing to the authority. Such disclosure is entered into the meeting minutes of the authority. And the commissioner, officer, employee shall not participate in any action by the authority relating to the property or contract. In which they have that, you know, such interest. Any violation of the foregoing provision of this section shall constitute misconduct in office. The section shall not be applicable to the acquisition of any interest. In obligations of the authority issued in connection with the project or the execution of agreements by banking institutions. Um, for the deposit of handling of funds in connection with the project or to act as a trustee under any trust indenture. Or utility services, um, where the rates are for which are fixed or controlled by a governmental entity. Or, or to membership on the board. Um, that's just basically saying it doesn't apply to your banks and it doesn't apply to your utilities. Okay, so our next module is those federal labor standards. It's going to provide guidance on federal labor standards, the provisions, the requirements that we have to implement. When we spend more than two thousand dollars of Nahazda funds on construction contracts, okay? The required payment of a prevailing wage, which is a combination of a basic hourly rate and any fringe benefit. The second segment is gonna provide information on a tri- tribal prevailing wage, which any tribe can create and adopt. And Davis Bacon would no longer apply to just your Nahazda funded contracts. It is the law which established Nahazda, so it's the Nahazda statute which allows for this particular rate. It, it doesn't apply to any of the rest of your federal funds, okay? Um, this is another area in which housing, you know, and your tribal governance. Um, you would look at and, and that action would be required to take that step. So Davis Bacon. It applies to federal government district to Columbia contracts in excess of two thousand dollars for construction alteration, repair, including. Painting and decorating, public buildings, public works. Many federal laws authorize federal assistance for construction through grants, loans, loan guarantees and insurances are. What they call a Davis Bacon Related Act, so it's DBRA is what you're looking at and we're. Mostly the Related Acts, okay? The Related Acts include provisions that apply to Davis Bacon Labor Standards, most of our federally assisted construction. Examples of federal acts are those Related Acts included the, the federal. Aid Highway Act, Housing and Community Development Act, Federal Water Pollution Control Act. Um, DBR requires the payment of a prevailing wage on a federally funded or assisted construction project. Most HUD construction work is not covered by the DBA. Itself since HUD seldom contracts directly for construction services. Most often as the, if Davis Bacon rates apply to a HUD project, it's because of the labor provision contained in one of HUD's Related Acts. Such as the U S Housing Act of nineteen thirty seven, okay, there, there's us. Uh, the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four, the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety. The Native American Housing Assistance, uh, Self-Determination Act, that's our Nahazda funds. So that's how we get into the RA. Um, the Related Acts are often referred to as the Davis Bacon and Related Act or, or the VRA. So which ones apply to our HUD programs? Well, there's a whole list of them there for you. Um, and that's how. Davis Bacon comes into play for us. Now my husband drives truck for a living, okay, um. They build roads, they do construction, he carries asphalt, he carries dirt, he does, you know. He came home one day and says, have you ever heard of Davis Bacon? And I kinda, he probably literally could have hit, had. My, my head hit the counter, it's like, yes, I know about Davis Bacon. What do you wanna know? You know, I said, it's tricky for you, you're a truck driver. And it is tricky because there's certain positions that it only applies to when they're on site. And they, they thought about those positions when it came to like flaggers cuz they're actually offsite. And we'll talk about that in a second. But, um, for a truck driver, it's the time they're actually on your construction, not when they're, you know, at the pit. So, um, basic provisions and requirements, contractors, subcontractors have to pay labors, mechanics. Employed directly upon the site of work, so that's your key words. Uh, at least the local prevailing wage, including fringe benefits listed in the Davis Bacon. Wage determination in the contract for the work performed. Davis Bacon Labor Standard clauses have to be included in any covered contract. Really, really important that you always, always start off. And when you're looking for an architect or an engineer or anybody in that realm. You're gonna say, are you familiar with Davis Bacon and are you familiar with Indian preference? Cuz those are the two things that you'll get tagged on if you don't follow. Uh, the Davis Bacon prevailing wage is a combination of a basic hourly wage and the fringe benefits listed in that wage determination. Your contractor's obligation to pay at least the prevailing wage listed in the contract wage determination can be met. By paying each laborer and mechanic, okay, and it's not just labors and mechanics. It's your tradespeople, okay, it's everybody that doesn't push a pin. Um, the applicable prevailing wage entirely as a cash wage. Or a combination of cash wages and employer provided bona fide fringe benefits. Prevailing wages include fringe benefits must be paid on all hours worked on the site of work. So laborer mechanic, the term laborer mechanic includes those workers whose duties are manual or physical in nature. Including the workers who use tools, who are performing the work of a trade as distinguished from mental or. Managerial. The term laborer mechanic includes apprentices, helpers, and in the case of contracts. Subject to the contract work hours and safety standards app, even your watch persons and guards. The term does not apply to workers whose duties are primarily administrative, executive, or clerical rather than manual labor. So there is an active, um, QR code coming here, um. This might help you if you're not familiar with it, it'll give you, you know, um, some information. Uh, know your rights, ways to protect yourself, Davis Bacon definitions, frequently asked questions, the posters that you have to have, contact information. That's an active QR code. So the, the provisions and the requirements, apprentices and trainees, okay, so you'll. There's a couple things you have to know about Davis Bacon. Contractors don't like paying Davis Bacon. In some cases, like where my husband worked. The first couple of years, it made a difference. Then after three years, he receives more. For his regular wage because he's got raises all the way through. Than what he gets under Davis Bacon, so that kinda doesn't apply to them, um. The, the newer workers, yes, it does, um. The other thing is. It's a reason unfortunately for your contractor to hike up your price and they're gonna do it. Oh, I gotta pay Davis Bacon, even though they're paying everybody almost the equivalent of your Davis Bacon, you know, so those things will happen. And you are responsible for making sure that the people on the site realize that they are supposed to be. Receiving Davis Bacon and that they are actually doing it. There's a couple other things that you have to make sure that happen too, though, um. They might tell you that he's an apprentice. I don't have to pay him Davis Bacon. Well, it depends on who he's an apprentice with. They have to be an apprentice registered with the Department of Labor. Or with the State Apprenticeship Agency recognized by the Department of Labor for them to get that exclusion, okay? Contractors, subcontractors, they're required to pay covered workers weekly, so they have to get paid weekly, my husband does. Um, submit weekly certified payroll records when they're on a Davis Bacon site. And they end up on sites when they're doing any housing work for our tribe, that tribe, when they're working at any of the prison systems. Um, when it's federal funds, when they're working on the Canadian American Bridge. They, that's a Davis Bacon job, you can pretty much delox in certain positions, those are Davis Bacon. You know, um, you can tell by the type of job it is usually if they should be getting Davis Bacon. Uh, contractors and subcontractors are required to pay those covered workers weekly. Submit weekly certified payroll records, so that's what you or. Your architect and engineer, whoever you're working with are gonna have to be looking at. Um, they're also required to post the applicable Davis Bacon wage determination. Posters on the job site in a prominent and accessible place where they can easily be seen by the workers. So they know that they're supposed to be receiving Davis Bacon. Davis Bacon wage determinations are published on SAM, so the same place that we go. To determine if we have a contractor that's debarred or suspended. And you gotta make sure you're doing that also, um. You're not familiar with procurement, take a procurement contracting course, um. But you have to make sure and, and you have to have proof that you've checked that, so take a snapshot of it, a screenshot and put it in your file. Um, but it's in the same place, okay, so you go to SAM website and go under the wage determinations and. Find out the wage for your area, okay? The prevailing wages are determined based on wages paid to various classes of labors and mechanics. Employed on specific types of construction projects in an area, okay? So your flagger. There was arguments all across the United States when it came to flaggers and traffic control cuz sometimes they were right outside the site of the contract. Okay, there was a final rule published in twenty twenty three. Uh, classifying locations adjacent, adjacent or virtually adjacent to a primary construction site at which workers perform activities. Associated with directing, you know. Uh, vehicle or pedestrian traffic around the construction site. And now they are. They've made that determination that you do need to pay them also Davis Bacon, okay? They are covered by the DBRA. So the requirements, uh, the labor standards applicable to our Nahazda programs, you can read about that at one thousand sixteen. You can adopt a prevailing wage rate, your tribe can. The prevailing wage rate is determined by the Department of Labor. Is supposed to be paid to all labors and mechanics for all construction and rehab. It prevents contractors from bidding below an area's prevailing wage. Your wage decisions, your general wage decisions are public for specific characters and types of work. By geographic location, usually a county, so in my case, we'd go to Chippewa County. Um, general wage decisions are available at www.SAM.gov. Selecting the correct wage decision, tribes and TDHEs have to select the correct wage decision for each project. Your correct wage dis- decision is that which a current. Or your current modification of that wage decision is applicable based on the character of the work and the geographic location. The appropriate location is generally the county in which the project or construction work will be physically located when completed. So you're, you know, that SAM.gov, uh, unique. Entity identifier number. Most of your EDs should have one of these, um, because of, we, we have to do it for several different purposes. Also, like I said, to make sure that our, our contractors aren't debarred. So a screenshot of SAM.gov, there's the wage determinations, okay? So the relationship to your state, local, and other federal laws. So depending on the size of the contract, there's other things that your contracting officer or your ED. Or the firm, um, that you hired to help you, you know, and if you haven't done much construction, by all means. It seems like a lot of money, but spend it, it'll save you in the long run. Get somebody reputable to teach you how to do it correctly the first couple of times, okay? Um, some people continue to use them forever. The only caveat being with like Davis Bacon. Is if your contractor. Is from out of town, he's gonna be sending out a notice that we're gonna have a meeting on this date. And all the other contractors on site are gonna know the day that he's on site, probably questioning, um. Or asking about those wage determinations. So a lot of times I would always tell them, you know, there's gonna be a woman. Uh, with long brown hair, she's gonna be out there. You tell your, your, your crew that she's gonna be asking you what you do and how much you get paid while you're on site. And that they're supposed to answer me, so I would go out and I would do those periodically. On a day totally different, on a totally different week than when the other contractor came in and ran that information. So your Copeland Anti-Kickback Act pro- prohibits contractors from any way. Inducing an employee to give up any part of their compensation to which they are entitled under their contract, um. Performing DBRA covered work, so this is to make sure that they don't slap them with a payroll deduction. For, you know, something that is, is not legal because they have to pay them more. Contractors on projects subject to DBR labor standards. Could also be subject to additional prevailing wage and overtime pay requirements under state and local laws. Also, they have to be, you know, an adherence with the overtime work pay requirement. Also, they have to be, you know, an adherence with the overtime work pay requirements under, I always called it Shishwa. It's CWHSSA. It's the Fair Staber Standards Labor Act, anything over forty, you're gonna get time and a half. Under. Federal contracting or assistance. You have that day-to-day responsibility for the administration and enforcement of your Davis Bacon labor standards provisions. And in order to promote constant and enforce effective enforcement, your Department of Labor has oversight authority. Including the authority to investigate compliance. So. How many, I still got a couple to go, but I had a case where. I had a bunch of guys come in. And. I used to have little teen, you know, wired. Basically tablets and I, my maintenance guys would track when they plowed, when they, you know, salt removal, certain things that they would do. Case there was a slip and fall or things like that. So I had a case of them that sat there and I would tell them. The rest of the crews, they'd come in and they'd have water or whatever. When you're working on a Davis Bacon site, write down when you went on, when you came off, what you were doing that day, you know, and where you were located. So they did. Couple of years down the road, I had three of them walk in the door and I said, hey, how are you guys doing? And they said, we wanna ask you about Davis Bacon. I said, I don't have a Davis Bacon project going right now. And they said, no, Cheryl. We think we should have been getting paid Davis Bacon and we're not. And they were working for a different tribe, close, and one of the contractors should have been paying them Davis Bacon. So we got them in contact with the Department of Labor, you know, we have a person we always call when we had any type of question. And those guys had those notebooks and they won their case and they got money back. And the guy got put on the suspended list for a while for doing that. But they got all their money. Because they tracked themselves and they had when they went on, when they came off, what they were doing and what the location of the site was, you know, so. I would always encourage that, at least teach your tribal members, you know, people that are gonna receive that, how to act, you know, to protect them. So those Davis Bacon wage rates, our contracts, our agreements for assistance sale lease Nahazda. Has to require a prevailing wage rate, so if you're gonna expend over two thousand dollars. And it is not your housing authority crew. Or if your tribe has its own crew. And I'm not talking tribal members, I'm talking employees of the tribe, if they're not doing that work. It's Davis Bacon, okay, it applies, prime contracts not, you know. In excess of two thousand dollars, so prime contracts not in excess of two thousand are exempt from Davis Bacon, so. If Nahazda assistance is only used to assist a homebuyer acquire a house, okay, so it gets kind of picky here. If you have a written agreement, your housing entity with. That homeowner, with that tenant, that you're going to give them assistance. You're supposed to be paying Davis Bacon on the building of that house, okay? But normally, we don't give them a written contract before everything is done. They do it, then we purchase it, but should you, then Davis Bacon would actually kick in. So HUD determine wage rates also mandates contracts and agreements for assistance require prevailing wages determined. Or adopted subsequent to determination under applicable tribal or local law. HUD shall be paid. By HUD shall be paid to your maintenance laborers, mechanics employed, you know, in the operation. It also applies to the architects, they're the only pencil pusher that it basically applies to. As well as the technical engineers and draftsman employed in the development of affordable housing, okay? Contracts in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, that contract work hours and safety standards kicks in also. So somebody within your housing staff. Has to become familiar with these labor laws if you're doing any building, okay? There's, you know, requirements for volunteers and different things like that, so other laws. There's about three other laws that will apply. So with homebuyer assistance, it applies if you have a prior agreement to use Nahazda to buy a newly constructed unit. It applies to all rental non-maintenance activities, does not apply when the contract is less than two thousand dollars. Those are your other three areas of labor that you have to pay attention to. Contracts over a hundred and fifty thousand Contract Work Hours and Safety Standards Act. The Copeland Act has to deal with the paycheck deductions. And the Fair Labor Standards Act Minimum Wage and Overtime Requirements, okay? So. You can put into place a tribal. Tribally designated wage if you would like. So. Let me see. You need to designate appropriate staff for your enforcement. Ensure your bid documents, your contracts, your subcontracts contain federal labor provisions, your applicable wage decisions. You have to conduct contractor wage inquiry, somebody's supposed to be going out in the field and making sure they're getting paid that money. You have to review those certified payroll reports, they're supposed to be getting paid weekly. You're supposed to submit enforcement reports and maintain all of that documentation. So there's a three-year law basically on a lot of our regulations, but when it comes to contracting, when it comes to procurement. You never get rid of that stuff, okay? Um, let me see. Your other labor, you need to actually designate a labor standards compliance officer who is. Your contracting officer, who's usually your ED, unless you're big, okay? And then the other way about it is to adopt that other tribal prevailing wage rate, so. We went through what requires us to pay Davis Bacon. The guidance document for a prevailing wage rate is two thousand three oh four, it's in your reference materials. And it allows you through the Nahazda statute. To set a prevailing wage rate. Tribes are still required to comply with Davis Bacon, Nahazda is the only thing that allows you to use this prevailing wage rate. For other HUD programs, if Nahazda dollars are mixed with any other money. It does not apply, Nahazda alone is what permits the use of a tribally determined wage rate. So the application of tribal law. It shall not apply to any contract or agreement for assistance sale lease pursuant to this act. If such contract or agreement is otherwise covered by one or more laws or regulations adopted by the Indian tribe. That requires the payment of not less than a prevailing wage as determined by the tribe. The tribe has to pass a tribal law or regulation to apply its TDW. The tribal law has to require the payment of not less than a prevailing wage as determined by the tribe. You must define prevailing, identify a mechanism for the tribe to make the determination of a prevailing wage. You have to monitor it, you design your monitoring and enforcement mechanisms to ensure compliance, so it's not a one and done. You design a method and a frequency of your wage survey. The prevailing wage shall be the wage paid to the majority, so more than fifty percent of the laborers and mechanics in the classification. On similar projects in the area during the period in question. If the same wage is not paid to a majority of those employed within that classification. The prevailing wage shall be the average of the wages paid weighted by the total employed within that classification. Tribes do not need to use that particular definition. But you must decide on definition for prevailing. Prevailing wages are not defined by HUD nor Nahazda, so I'll save you from looking through all those documents. It doesn't do it. So the Department of Labor laws related to Davis Bacon. Overtime provisions, your Contract Work Hours and Safety Standards Act. Certified Payroll Reports of the Copeland Anti-Kickback Act do not apply. To our Nahazda grants if you have adopted a tribal prevailing wage rate. So your wage certificate, this is the point where I was telling you during, I think it's the APR. Check this box if the recipient will use Davis Bacon or HUD determined wage rates for all construction and maintenance activities, including IHBG funds. That's the box click. A lot of times people will say, we have a wage rate, you know, and they're thinking about the wage grid. That's not what this is, okay? So check this box if the recipient will use tribally determined wage rates for all construction and maintenance activities included. For your IHBG. That's the one that a lot of people will click by accident and the whole thing will get kicked back to you. So that's a quick rundown on that. Make sure that if you're doing any building, somebody's paying attention to all of those things that they have to follow. So this last section is for your useful life and binding commitments. Like I said, huge areas of slippage here, the most recent guidance is two thousand and twenty oh two. There is another piece of guidance that you can pull up under two thousand fourteen oh nine, has a lot of the same materials, but there's a couple of examples in there. So the intent of the guidance is to provide us with information maintaining our housing and non-housing projects. For the useful life of our property, okay, it clarifies what the satisfactory to the secretary, what constitutes an acceptable binding commitment. And there is program guidance that was updated. The newest one is in your reference materials that now has an FHA loan rider attached to it. It replaced the guidance from two thousand fourteen oh nine. If you use the FHA product, you have to use that particular document. So the background, Nahazda requires housing. Units remain affordable for either the remaining useful life of the property as determined by the secretary. So if you ever see that language as determined by the secretary. That basically means that if you address that in your IHP or your APR and they approve it. It is. Determined by the secretary that it's fine, okay, if they reject it, well then not so much. For other such period that the secretary determines is the longest feasible period of time consistent with sound economics and the purposes of Nahazda. Useful life is the time period during which an assisted property must remain affordable. Nahazda gives the secretary the authority to determine the housing unit's useful life or other period of time which the unit must remain affordable. Started off the very first day. I shared with you, we get the money. From Congress for the behalf of low-income Native Americans, so this is what this is tying back to. The regulations at one thousand one forty-two state to the extent required in your Indian housing plan. Each block grant recipient shall determine its determination of useful life. Of the assisted housing units in its developments in accordance with the local conditions of the Indian area of the recipient. By finding your IHP to be in compliance with the statute, the department would be determining the useful life to be in accordance with Nahazda. So you list. That period of time in your IHP, if they approve your IHP. Your time period is approved. So the Nahazda statute, the regulations require the affordability period be secured through a binding commitment satisfactory to the secretary. The purpose and intent of the binding commitment is to guarantee that that housing is gonna remain affordable for the useful life or affordability period. The binding commitment requirement under Nahazda not only applies to the parties, but it applies to the properties. The purpose and intent of requiring a binding commitment is to guarantee that housing will remain affordable for its useful life. Regardless of who may have entered into that contractual agreement or may be in possession. The binding commitment required cannot be. Satisfied solely with the contract between the parties. Pursuant to one thousand one forty-four, in order to be satisfactory to HUD. You have to have a written use restriction placed on the assisted property. Has to run with the land, hence a binding commitment must be recorded. So the first primary objective is to develop, maintain affordable housing for occupancy by low-income Indian families. Every time funds are spent, IHBG funds are spent on a property and investment is made for a low-income family. In your community, the return on that investment is the period of continued use. The period of future use is your affordability period or useful life of that property. Housing units constructed, developed, rehabbed using your IHBG funds have to establish a useful life to ensure the property. Will remain available to low-income families. So the affordability period, the period of time which that property is available for use by low-income families is the remaining useful life of the property as approved by HUD. Or the longest feasible period of time consistent with sound economics for the purposes of Nahazda as approved by HUD. In determining a property's affordability period or useful life, the recipient could use a tiered schedule. Similar to that used by the home program. It would specify a number of years during which the housing has to remain affordable, dependent upon the amount of funds being invested in the property per occurrence. For example. So this is the one they handed out with the first guidance that I've seen through. Ninety percent of the ones, and now I always ask, can I see your IHP, can I see what you have for your useful life? Do you have useful life agreements? Boy, I hear a lot of, no, we don't have them, but yet they have this in their IHP. And almost. Majority of the time it's word for word, those periods of time. In the last year, I went into two places where it's a longer period of time. One up in Alaska where they barge everything in and one in a very, very wealthy part of the United States where. It costs a lot of money to live there, so they have. Less, I guess, less time associated with the money. The other decision you have to make besides the time periods is how you're gonna get the money back. Is it gonna be a prorated versus a single recovery? If it's prorated, it's ten thousand dollars for ten years. In the fifth year. If a non-low-income, non-Native American took over. You would have to pay the housing authority back, they would have to pay the housing authority back when they sell it. Five thousand dollars, because it would go down a thousand dollars a year. If it was a single recovery amount. You would be on the line for the whole amount put in there, right up. Forever, it's a single recovery amount until that time expired, so those are the decisions you have to make, first of all, the timeframe. Second of all, is it gonna be prorated or is it gonna be a single recovery amount? Okay, for relatively minor investments, the designated affordability period can be a nominal period of time, but Nahazda requires some period be designated. Has to be secured with a binding commitment. Additionally, if the reasonable affordability period is less than a year, a binding commitment is required. However, it's not necessary to record the written use restriction for purposes of complying with Nahazda. But it is a good business practice. However, to record the written use restriction for purposes of giving notice to subsequent purchasers. Your dollar ranges, the corresponding number of years can differ from those shown depending upon your local conditions. The recipient may choose to assign a longer affordability period if they wanted to ensure the availability of a longer continuing affordable housing supply for low-income families. Be honest, I have not seen a longer one. If the recipient chooses to use some other method of assigning affordability period, the IHP should describe how that method provides for. An affordability period with appropriate consideration given to unique local conditions. In setting a useful life, a specific number of years should be given for the affordability period, not a range of years. You don't say thirty to forty years or a general statement, the number of years should also be without ambiguous qualification. About approximate if properly maintained. Planned, expected, or estimated, similarly, your designated affordability period should in no way be contingent upon the continuation of block grant funding. So to report that useful life, a description of your plan. Or system of determining the useful life of your housing assist with block grant funds has to be provided in your IHP. So it would be a good idea to look up in your IHP what you're using, maybe compare it to that, see if it deviates at all. A record of the current specific useful life for that housing unit. Assisted with block grant funds should be maintained in the recipient's files and be available for review. Has to be available for review, your auditor could look at it, HUD will definitely look at it when they come for their monitoring. Types of properties and assistance covered. The useful life provisions apply to all housing units. Types of properties and assistance covered. The useful life provisions apply to all housing units, um. And non-housing units assisted with block grant funds except for mutual help homes. That were um built under the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act. Okay, the initial home buyer, any other subsequent owner that purchases the property during the period of its useful life. Need only qualify as low-income at the time of their purchase, okay? In other words, if your initial owner seeks to sell the property while it still has a remaining useful life or affordability period assigned to it. Your new home buyer must qualify as an eligible family at the time of their purchase. However. If it's a transfer of a homeownership unit, and this is where it's a little bit different than like our old mutual help language. To a family member or a household member. So if they're a member of the household and they're not. Blood relation, it doesn't matter as long as they are a member of that household. Um, they are not subject to a binding commitment for the remaining useful life of the property. Thus, if a homeownership unit has been transferred to a family member or household member. That written use restriction will not terminate, even though it will not apply. So you still need to track it till the end of that time expires. However, any subsequent transfer by the family member or household member to a third party who is not a family member. Or a household member. Is subject to the remaining useful life of the affordability period under that recorded binding commitment. That's why you're going to keep wanting to let it go down. Uh, should the home be sold during its useful life period to a new purchaser. That does not qualify as a family member or a household member or an eligible family. And funds are not repaid to your block grant program in accordance with your useful life. The secretary will take appropriate action against you as an IHBG recipient in accordance with section four oh one A of Nahazda. So you have to get that money back. Um. I asked my staff member and she said that I could share this with her or share this, um. I had a staff member who used it for down payment assistance. She was married to a non-native. They purchased off the reservation. They got divorced. Um, we used a prorated amount. The house was sold to a non-low-income, non-native family. So she was responsible for paying the housing authority back. The remainder of that useful life agreement, okay? So you have to track that. Um, otherwise HUD will come back and then they won't let you use HUD funds either to repay that, but you will get tagged on it. So similarly, a low-income owner occupant for privately owned housing that receives funded assistance, whether in the form of a loan or a grant. For moderate or substantial rehab. So this is when we have the slippage. Sometimes our housing entities don't think about rehab. When you're spending basically anything over five thousand dollars of your money, this stuff applies, okay? Um. Need only be low-income at the time the assistance is provided. However, you need a binding commitment accompanying the assistance that guarantees an appropriate useful life. Or affordability period and provides for remedies for the breach. Of such useful life provisions upon transfer of ownership during the assigned useful life. So if they get a rehab and they sell the house, then they're, you know, on that line again. The useful life and binding commitment requirements apply to all housing units assisted with those funds. Including units developed through the Title VI Housing Program. Okay, so make sure you got that part. Model activities, non-housing, the useful life provisions apply to all model activities and non-housing projects. Constructed, developed, or acquired with block grant funds to assure the remaining useful life of the property. Will be maintained for affordable housing activities. Non-housing projects, including community centers, model activities established to provide affordable housing activities. The record of use restriction, records must be kept for all use restrictions. There's a sample record of use restrictions form with the guidance can be used by recipients to record. Both in Nahazda and other affordability restrictions. Restrictions can vary both in how they um are imposed. And the model reporting form is designed to be the registry of all various use restrictions that are placed on your recipient properties. So acceptable binding commitments, um, Nahazda requires there be a binding commitment satisfactory to the secretary in place to ensure. That that housing unit will remain affordable for its useful life. When the block grant funds are used either in the form of a grant or a loan to purchase, construct, rehabilitate a residence, there has to be a written agreement in place. Between the recipient and the individual being assisted with the block grant funds. The written use agreements must include provisions for the IHBG recipient's useful life or affordability period restrictions as specified. Within their IHP. The acceptable binding commitment provisions must be imposed by recorded deed restrictions, okay? This is the other place. They'll put the binding agreement in place, but they won't put anything on the land. So you have to make sure that that's in place also. Must be imposed by recorded deed restrictions, covenants running with the land or other mechanisms approved by HUD. Except that the useful life restriction can or may terminate upon foreclosure by a lender. Or transfer in lieu of foreclosure, as long as that action is not for the purposes of avoiding. Low-income affordability restrictions. The written use agreement may contain a scheduling outline, uh, payback of a decreasing balance. Of assistance or a percentage equity over the useful life of the affordability period that would have to be reimbursed by. Your program, the recipient's program, if that subsequent um occupant does not meet those block grant eligibility requirements. So types of binding commitments, there's a number of different ways. There are samples within that guidance. There's six attached useful life use restrictions agreement, two for fee land, two for trust land, one for a model activity. Um, non-housing project and one for an FHA insured loan. They can be used for that purpose. Any form used has to be properly recorded with the appropriate land records office, okay? So you use the VIA or you use your county clerk. Um, additional use restrictions can be imposed on such properties as long as they don't contradict. The Nahazda useful life restriction. So this is a sample, um, useful life use restriction agreement for fee land. When a restriction placed on fee land, a covenant running with the land is imposed on the property to enforce that restriction. Um. Nahazda useful life use restriction, Indian housing on fee land with a single recovery amount. The covenant requires that the full amount of Nahazda funds invested in the property be refunded in all cases of default. This would be on fee land with a prorated recovery amount. Covenant uh requires that the amount of Nahazda funds invested in the property be prorated over the life of the restriction. In the event of a default, only the current prorated amount must be refunded. Then you have it for trust land with a single recovery amount, trust land with a prorated amount. And then there's the FHA loan rider, um, useful life use restriction. Some grantees use funds to provide down payment assistance. Um, to receive a loan, you know, to our recipients to receive a loan insured by FHA because FHA requirements. Um, under twenty-four CFR two oh three four one, the sample useful life restrictions contain language that limits the transfer of a property in. The event of a foreclosure, the FHA loan rider addresses those requirements and should be used when Nahazda funds are invested within that property. And that is it. I apologize nine minutes again. I talked too much. No. I hope you guys enjoyed it. Tomorrow's Friday. I know Friday is a bad day for you guys, but please come back. Um, I'll teach you something tomorrow too, I hope. Brooke?
Thank you, Cheryl. No need to ever apologize. All of this information is so incredibly important and I'm sure everyone, you know, wants to hear it and I know the recording. Wants to have it too, so no worries there. Um, folks, I put the webinar feedback survey into the chat. Uh, we got a one yesterday and we got a couple the day before, so I would love to see a few more for today as well. They are different surveys each day. Um, it takes like two to three minutes to complete. It is anonymous, so you don't have to like feel concerned about your name or your email being attached to it. It's just a way to let us know what's working, what can be improved upon, and we share it with our instructors, so it helps them as well. I'd really appreciate it. If those of you on here completed the survey. Uh, we hope you can join us for day five, like Cheryl said, that's going to be tomorrow on Friday, same time, same place. Uh, two PM Eastern, one PM Central, twelve PM Mountain, eleven AM Pacific, and ten AM Alaska. You'll just log on to the website like you did today and you'll see that green banner at the top of your screen. You'll click it and join. We hope you can check out our other recorded webinars. They are available on our YouTube channel. Um, and I will post the recording of today's webinar uh to YouTube as well as the learning platform tomorrow. So if you go into the courses section. You can see the recordings for day one, two, and three already, um, as well as get those reference items that Cheryl put together for you. And um, you can check out uh the PDF of each of the slides as well. Um, feel free to check out our other upcoming training events. We are always posting about them to our social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Twitter, and we have a podcast that we do here at the NLC called the Hope-A-Tanga Native American Podcast. You can listen to that wherever you listen to your podcasts. Um, and that is all we have for you today, folks. So thank you so much for tuning in. We hope you have a wonderful rest of your day and we hope to see you back here on Friday for day five. Thank you again, Cheryl.
Thank you. Have a great day, guys. Everyone stay safe.
Bye y'all. I'm going to turn off the recording, but I will leave the room open.